It's six o'clock. At this time, I'll call the regular meeting for Perry City Council Tuesday, September 18th, 2018 to order please. We have a call. Item three is the invitation and the pledge of allegiance to the flag. If you're able, please stand. I'd like to call in Councilman and Reverend Willie King with Faith Bible Fellowship for the invitation.
Just bow down here, please. Father God, we do thank you for this opportunity. We thank you for the inspiration. We thank you for our leadership, Lord, and we just pray now for everything that's happening in the city of Perry. And, Lord, as we move forward, I ask for your wisdom and your direction there. Go with each one of us, Lord. And we just thank you for what we see and what we're doing. We give you your praise and the glory. In Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
I'd like to call in Councilman Robert Jones for leaving us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item four are recognitions and presentations. Council, here for bearers, I want to debit from the agenda. We have some special guests with us tonight. Mr. Scott and Deborah Cox are with Perry Youth Leadership, and they have their class with us.
Yes, yes. Thank you, Mayor, Council. Appreciate that. We just want to introduce our Perry Youth Leadership. The Chamber of Commerce here in Perry has a youth leadership class, and their next module is city government. So you'll get to see them, those of you who will be here October 6th, that room today.
Sixteen.
Sixteen, sorry. It had a six in it. That's close. And they're going to, they're studying city government, and we've asked them to come to a city council meeting and kind of find out what you do. So that's kind of what we're doing here. So I wanted to introduce them. We've got quite a few of them. If that's okay. All right, so we're going to start with Hannah Stanley, right here. William Riddle. Colson Jones. Lydia Hardy. Jackson Riddle. Abigail Terrier. We got, where did you go there? Aubrey. Aubrey. Maddie Alfred. Riley Jill Hand. We've got India Lo. Jake Brown. Gracie's back there.
Right here.
And then Emily, who's back here. So did I get everybody? That's right. We have 25 in our class, so I think we got a majority. We have a call from our class. Thank you for allowing us to be in here and recognize kids. We appreciate it.
Well, I want to thank you all for taking time out of your schedules. You've already heard me say this once, when you had your initial reception, I guess it was, downtown, but you're going to learn an awful lot. And what's most important about that is that you're broadening your scope and your horizons, and I want you to understand how government works, among other things, and more importantly, I want you to stay involved, not only in your school and in your extracurricular activities, but also in the communities, in one form or another. And most, if not all, of you already do that from that standpoint. Thank you for doing that. You're going to be more well-rounded. You're going to be a lot, you're already a lot smarter than probably everybody up here already. So that's important, and you're going to be the future leaders of our country, as well as city. And if anybody knows how to fix technology, that's a problem. But thank you for coming. And if you have any questions about anything that happens as far as the city government is concerned, I'm the mayor, the council members are to my left and right, the city manager's over here, the city attorney's over there, and then these men and women along these tables actually run the city. We have a policy of hiring the right people for the right positions and then get out of their way, and they do a fantastic job, as well as some of the other people that you see lying in the rooms. Any of them can answer your questions about anything that they do or point you in the right direction to someone who does know the answers. So again, thank you and welcome to the city of Perry. Glad to have you all. Item four A is a presentation to Representative Shaw Blackman from the Georgia Municipal Association. Mr. Wiggins.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Joel Wiggins with the Georgia Municipal Association, and at the end of every two-year legislative cycle, we like to recognize legislators who have shown leadership at the General Assembly in issues pertaining to local government. Tonight, we are recognizing Representative Shaw Blackman. Would you like to join me at the front, please, sir? Representative Blackman has shown leadership, most notably on House Bill 329, and this is something that has been a platform piece for the Georgia Municipal Association for cities, and he does a great job for all you people in this room, and we just would like to recognize him for his excellence.
Representative Blackman, would you like to, first of all, congratulations. I see you have court with you, and as important, you have your beautiful bride Whitney. Would you like to, I'll already introduce them. Would you like to say something?
Actually, Joel was kind enough, and he asked me, you know, I represent two different cities, two great cities, and I asked him, it's just impossible to choose. I love them both, and he said, well, let's go to both. And I hope you all will understand, because it gives me the opportunity to thank you, because I'm only getting this because I'm doing what y'all pay me to do and what I'm supposed to do, and I do that because the dollars are better spent at the local level because of y'all and because of what goes on at the local level. So it's just an opportunity for me to say thank you for what you do. Thank you for your friendship. Thank you for your support and for making this happen, because none of it happens in a vacuum. So thank you so much.
Representative, we thank you for the job that you continue to do, and everybody seems to think that they're only in session when February.
For 40 days.
Forty days, you don't know anything else. I know differently. You're working on this every single week of every month of the entire year long, and that takes commitment and dedication. And Whitney, thank you for allowing him to do that, especially now. But don't let him out of your sight, because as long as he's at home, make sure he pulls his weight.
It's our honor and pleasure.
Thank you all very much, Mr. Wiggins. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Item four B is a recognition of battalion chiefs, even Wheeler and Kirk Crumpton, Fire Sergeant Patrick Watson, Firefighter Ethan Singletary, Austin Redmond, and Ginn Julian, is that right?
That's right.
And James Flannoy.
Chief Parker.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor, Council. You know, our first responders work tirelessly, many times, for 12 and 24-hour shifts, and they often do that without any type of recognition at all. And often, they would rather stay away from the limelight themselves. However, you know, here in Perry, our guys and gals work very well together. We have great relationships between fire, police, and EMS. And what I'd like to do tonight, we have a group that made a life save at one of our businesses here across the interstate, at Guardian Centers, and what I'd like to do is have those gentlemen come up tonight, and I have a citation to read, and we'd like to recognize them. So Chief Crumpton and the fire gang, EMS crew, the police officers that were there that day. We got them to be seen. I'm going to read this citation on how to describe the events that day. On August 9th, 2018, Guardian Centers experienced a serious medical emergency in which a 25-year-old male trainee suddenly became non-responsive and was not breathing. As Guardian Centers initiated its standard protocol for response, utilizing the dedicated on-site medic for the day, off-duty City of Perry Fire Department Battalion Chief and Paramedic Kirk Crumpton was almost immediately on scene and began life-saving measures. Chief Crumpton took over CPR on the patient and directed the use of the Automated External Defibrillator, or AED, a lightweight portable device that delivers an electric shock through the chest to the heart. While CPR continued, first responders from the Perry Fire Department arrived, including Battalion Ephraim Wheeler, or excuse me, Battalion Chief Ephraim Wheeler, and members of Rescue One and Engine One, which were firefighter and paramedic Hunter Flannoy, firefighter Nadad Ginn Julian, Sergeant EMT Patrick Watson, firefighter EMT Austin Redmond, and firefighter EMT Ethan Singletary, as well as Sergeant Jeff Kajawa and officers Brian Mixon and Josh Brown of the Perry Police Department. These members tirelessly managed the incident while conducting life-saving procedures on the patient for almost 15 minutes while he remained unresponsive. Once the Houston Healthcare ambulance arrived, members assisted paramedics Jimmy Kersey and Michael Sumner with advanced life-saving procedures, including IV, innovation tube, and cardiac monitoring. Persistence was key to the success as the patient was defibrillated a total of seven times. At the time of transport, the patient was regaining consciousness, had a pulse and a blood pressure. After two days in critical, unstable condition, the patient awoke on August 11th, 2018, in good condition with no permanent damage. Because of the rapid response time and diligent efforts of these first responders, the young man's life was saved, and he was able to go home to his family days after the event. The determined efforts, outstanding initiative, and intensity during this rescue were instrumental in saving this man's life. Their unselfish actions and giant service reflect great credit upon themselves and are in keeping with the highest traditions of humanitarian service. Let's give these men a round of applause. It's not, it's not often that when somebody goes unresponsive that way and they're shocked with an AED when it has to be used, you don't always have a good outcome. And the idea that this young man had to be shocked seven times before he responded and his heart started beating right again is amazing. So the efforts that these gentlemen performed that day are truly amazing. And what I have here is a copy of this citation I'd like to give to each one of these guys. And again, gentlemen, thank you for all that you did that day, saving this man's life. And also have a letter, while I'm handing this letter out, Mr. Tim Maloney from Guardian Centers is here, and he'd like to say a few words.
Thank you, Chief Parker. Mayor, Council, thank you for having me here today this afternoon. Ladies and gentlemen, we, like all things else, my heart is worn because of this picture up here. We run an organization that strives to integrate the first response efforts in many places around the country. The integration opportunity to work together is on C, and we spend a lot of time working with organizations to provide a rapid response that the city of Perry already has developed based on the tools of Chief Parker and Chief Lynn to work together and execute something amazing. They legitimately saved a young man's life, and Guardian Centers is forever grateful for their efforts, because we run a risky business, and without the support of the city, without the efforts and the relationship we enjoy with the fire department, law enforcement, EMS, we wouldn't be able to provide the service that we're able to provide to many women that all operate here at home, but also around the world. So absolutely fantastic job. I can't thank you enough for what you did for that young man. I'm actually certain I think he's coming back, but just a tremendous effort out on behalf, and they really, really stuck at it, and they truly made a life-saving effort for that. Guardian Centers is forever grateful, and we look forward to continuing to work with the team as we go forward. So we're blessed to be here in Perry. We wouldn't want to be anyplace else, and it's because of what they did and what we do, there's really something special. So again, thank you for all, everything you did. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Real quick, I want to make mention that the firefighters, Ethan and receive a life save pin that they'll be able to wear on their uniform, and again, we thank you for all that they did that day and what they do every day. Thank you guys very much, again. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, gentlemen, for the job that you have done. People ask me all the time, why do I choose to live in the city of Perry? That's one of the major reasons. We've got the right people in the right place, and they respond in a timely manner, and they know exactly what they're doing.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Maloney. I appreciate you coming. Item four C is an introduction of some new hires from the police department. Chief Lynn.
Thank you, sir. I'll get that one over. Thank you, sir. Gary Turley, come forward, please. I'd like to introduce Officer Gary Turley. He started with us, well, he started on the road last week. I guess he's been here a couple of weeks now. He comes to us from Ohio to South Dakota, eventually got here to Georgia, you know, where he was meant to be in 2000. Worked with the sheriff's office for a little over 10 years, starting in 2008, either in the jail or on the road. Gary's got an associate's degree in criminal justice from Georgia Military College, and he's working on his bachelor's right now. We were happy to have him come over and go to work with us. He's worked closely with us through his job at Sheriff's Department for a number of years, and so we're happy to have him. Gary, if you'll introduce yourself to the Mayor, Council.
Mayor, it's good to meet you, Gary Turley. Yes, sir. Nice to meet you. Thank you, guys, for the opportunity. It's been something that I've been thinking for a while, and everything went into place just right this time, so I appreciate you letting me in. Thank you all.
So we put him to work, but he's off today, actually. He's been working harder at home. It seems like he's been painting all day. Trying to break it out a little longer, but I haven't finished painting. But we're happy to have Gary on board.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you all again.
Daniel Lason, Officer Lason, who's obviously on duty tonight, so. So we also hired Daniel from Houston County, and he was there about eight years, either in the jail or on the road, because with the Sheriff's Department, you normally start in the jail. You've kind of got to work your way to the road. Daniel was born in Perry, but then left. I'm assuming that was his parents that did that.
I'd have to say so when I was five.
Have to say so. Lived in Iowa and Washington State, went to Bob Jones University, got a degree, a bachelor's degree in criminal justice, and then decided to come back to Perry. So we're happy to have him back. Like I say, he's got eight years plus with the Sheriff's Department, and these two guys decided to come over together. We're happy to have them. They're already in field training. We expect that to be a fairly short trip based on their experience. And so introduce yourself, Mayor.
Good. Welcome. Glad to have you.
Thank you. Glad to be here. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Glad to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Go back to work. You don't have to leave out his manatee. No, I was kidding. Chiqueta, please. So the third and final new employee to introduce tonight, Chiqueta Newsom started today. So she's been to HR boot camp this morning and then has been working on reading policies. And if you've ever seen our policies, that's about a week and a half task to do, unless you finish today. Okay, okay. So Chiqueta's originally from Atlanta, but she grew up in Jackson, Georgia, and she went to Valdosta State University and got a bachelor's degree in criminal justice and a minor in African-American studies, right, so far? And she has just come to us from Forsyth PD, where she's done two years. So she comes to us with some experience. Right now, she's in the phase where she's reading policy, learning our rules and regulations, 911, all that kind of pre-field training officer stuff, and then in the next three weeks, she'll go to field training status and start catching up with the two guys she just met. So if you'll introduce her.
Hi, everybody. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for having me. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Not everybody gets to do this on the first day.
Anyway, that's the ones we got right now. We've got another one for the next meeting, and we're in interviews to try to fill a couple more of those.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
To the new hires, welcome to the best police department anywhere in the world. The big men and women around you will fully support that, and we're glad you're here. I sleep very well at night knowing that you all are on duty and watching our backs. Congratulations on making the decision to come to the best city anywhere that I know of, no question where you may be from, but this is it. And I hope you'll have long and fruitful careers here, and we're looking forward to meeting great things, and silence is good when we don't hear about stuff going on because you're all doing your jobs. Thank you very much. Continue the good work. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Item five, Assistant Lieutenant. Is anyone here who wishes to address Councilman, any matter? Yes, please state your name and address.
Mayor, Council, I'm the city manager and attorney. My name is Mr. Rodney Jackson, and I'm here in Georgia, and I do have my microphones jaged as far as the [inaudible]. I'm a member of the New British Native Baptist Church, where our pastor is Dr. Leon Ward Jr., and he encouraged as far as being city young ladies, as far as them coming to city council meetings. He wants us to be able to bring citizens also to the council meeting, and I did bring one, the name of Kamalia Fenson, and I saw something she did a few minutes ago, stand up, which is good, but she's very kind of shy and everything, but she learned about government and the operation. Of course, like I said, I've been in this business almost, it was in 1977, so it's been a quite a long time, and I began to always commend you of doing an excellent job, which you do, and but I'm still kind of concerned about that road as far as up on Hilltop, as far as two ways in, as you know, that Hurricane Florence over in North Carolina, I don't know that would even have anything to do with being able to get in and out up on Hilltop, but of course, all the, the most, entire state almost underwater. But we're saying that now is that when the water comes from those rains, it's really devastating that area, so we just definitely want to try to have another way in, another way out, as far as up on the Hilltop area. And again, I recommend, like I said, Broad Street, which is in, all like it's been in, it can be connected to the school, and where the school entrance on the back side of 341, and there can be another entrance as far as coming in, coming out. I'm praying to God that nothing, that actually ever happens as far as that area, but like I said, the rain, all that area on James Street is flooded. Policemen can't get up there, ambulance or anyone else can get up there, and all the citizens will be bopping up there, so I do want that maybe if you all look into this situation. And again, on these days, she may be a beautiful rose like I was, Mr. Blackman, up here, as in, of course, [inaudible] there. Again, thank all of you for allowing me to, now, to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Welcome to our meeting. Glad to have you here. Anyone else want to address Council? Item six A, for your consideration, you have been presented the amendments of the September 4th, 2018, pre-council meeting and the September 4th, 2018 council meeting. This time, I will entertain a motion that we approve these amendments as presented.
So we start.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any additional selections, changes, or discussion regarding these amendments? Hearing none. At this time, if you're all in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item seven is old business. Seven A are ordinances for a second reading and adoption. Item seven A one, this is the second reading of an ordinance that will amend the food truck ordinance. Mr. Wood.
Mayor, Mayor, Council, this amendment addresses three things. It makes a modification to the definition of ice cream trucks to make some clarification on how ice creams can be sold in food trucks and not be considered an ice cream truck. It also modifies the hours of operation and the times, the number of times per month that a food truck can operate outside of downtown.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Does any member of Council have any questions of Mr. Wood regarding this item? Hearing none. This is the second reading, and at this time for adoption, if you see fit, at this time I will entertain a motion that we adopt the ordinance that amends the food truck ordinance as stated. So there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item seven A two, this is the second reading of an ordinance that amends section 5-34 penalties. Mr. Wood.
Yes, Mayor, Mayor, Council, this is an amendment that set, that will make this section consistent with the other sections of the city code regarding penalties.
Just making everything consistent.
That's correct, yes.
Thank you. Does any member of Council have any questions of Mr. Wood regarding this item? Hearing none. Again, this is the second reading and time for adoption, if you see fit. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we adopt the ordinance that amends section 5-34 penalties as described. So move. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item eight is any other old business. Item eight A is any other old business from the mayor. I have none. Item eight B is any other old business from council votes. Ms. Biden, Grace. Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Walker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hunt.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Jackson.
Mr. King.
Thank you. Item eight C is any other old business from the city manager. Mr. Gilmore.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Item eight D is any other old business from the assistant city manager, Mr. Smith.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And item eight E is any other old business from the city attorney, Mr. Waters.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Item nine A two business. Nine A are matters that have been referred from the September 17th, 2018 work session held last night and the September 18th, 2018 pre-council meeting that we had at 5:00 this afternoon. We have a few items that deserve our attention. Item nine A one, we're being asked to authorize an additional two entry-level positions for the Department of Public Works. Mr. Gilmore.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Council, as we talked about at your work session last night, the administration is recommending you authorize two additional entry-level positions. One will be used for litter control, and the other will be used for landscaping.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Does any member of Council have any questions of Mr. Gilmore concerning this item? Hearing none. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we authorize the addition of two entry-level positions for the Department of Public Works as described. So move. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item nine A two, this is a resolution restricting access to health and dental insurance coverage for elected officials. Mr. Gilmore.
Thank you, Mayor. This resolution proposes to amend our health dental insurance policy to eliminate the provision that elected officials can be covered underneath the policy with a provision that any who may be currently enrolled or enrolled as of October 1st would be allowed to continue.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Does any member of Council have any questions of Mr. Gilmore regarding this item? Hearing none. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we adopt the resolution restricting access to health and dental insurance coverage for selected officials as described. So move. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Please let the record indicate that Councilman Hunt opposes. The motion carries. Thank you. Item nine A three, this is a resolution authorizing certain incentives for Hotel Project A. Mr. Gilmore.
Thank you, Mayor. This also was discussed at your work session yesterday. This resolution does three things. The first is it states that Project A meets the qualifications and guidelines for your hotel incentive package. The second is it outlines what fees and charges that the city normally would charge would be waived for this particular project. And the third provides conditions on when the owner, developer, or its successors would have to repay the city should the project number one fail to be done at least 80% one year after the building permit is issued. And the second is that should the hotel cease to operate or significantly change function from originally approved within the first five years, there is a payback provision that's pro-rated over the years.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. I have a question. What is the estimated financial impact of the dollar bag of this project? Mr. Smith.
There's approximately $25,000 worth of assets.
Okay. But what, how much money they're going to invest?
Oh, the total investment's $6.5 billion.
Very good.
Possibly 15 jobs.
Thank you. Does any member of Council have any further questions of staff? Hearing none. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we adopt the resolution authorizing the certain incentives for Hotel Project A as described. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you. Item 9B, these are resolutions for introduction and adoption. 9B1 is the resolution that will amend the period fee schedule. Mr. Gilmore.
Thank you, mayor. Mayor and council, the administration is recommending that you induct a amendment to our fee schedule that does a few things. First is that it provides a discounted administrative fee for alcoholic beverage licenses and occupational taxes if the business or petitioner files online. That'll save us some money. We're recommending half the normal administrative charge on that. Second thing is it eliminates the fee spraying mosquito service charge since the city council determined we're no longer going to be in that business. Third thing is it adjusts the fee schedule to remove the downtown district, which originally was done separately before the city got into collecting for non-tot or commercial pickup. And then the final item is to adjust the activation fee for the natural gas system to match what it is for the water.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Does any member of council have any questions regarding this item? Staff? Hearing none. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we adopt the resolution that amends the period fee schedule as described. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 9C is the award of bids. 9C1 is bid number 2018-47 under Division 1 of the Water Treatment Plant. Mr. McMurray.
Thank you, mayor and council. Constantine Engineering has completed bidding on this project. Division 1 will be the water treatment plant, which is a 2 million gallon a day water plant for water treatment, which includes seventation, concrete structure, aeration, and all chemical treatment of drinking water. We did receive two bids. There were four some, four some, I'm sorry, four bids. Reeves Young was the low bidder, and the base bid amount was $8,609,000. City staff has reviewed the bids and has recommended a change order and deduct of $390,000 for a recommended total final price of $8,219,000 for the water plant. City staff does recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. McMurray. Does any member of council have any questions of Mr. McMurray regarding this item? Mr. Gilmore, what's the funding source for this money?
That's a good question. No. I think my heart just. Probably wind up for this in some of the subsequent ones on the water plant will be a combination of a G-fa loan, which would be the major funding source, and some SPOSS 18 funds.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff and council? Hearing none. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we approve the department and engineer recommendations to award this bid in the amount of $8,609,000 less the change order of $390,000 for a net of $8,219,000. Order number one for, to Reeves Young LLC of Sugar Hill, Georgia. There's a motion and a second. Mr. King?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 9C2, this is bid number 2018-48 for Division 2 of Groundwater Supply Weapons. Mr. McMurray.
Yes, mayor and council. Division 2 is, has been reviewed by Constantine Engineering, and the, we received two bids. Road Drilling was the low bidder on this project. The base bid amount was $1,666,770. City staff has reviewed and recommended a change order from two wells, Groundwater Supply Well, to one well in a phasing project. The less amount is $770,385. The, we are, we are recommending the award for $869,385.
Thank you, Mr. McMurray. Does any member of council have any questions of Mr. McMurray or staff regarding this item? Hearing none. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we approve the department and engineer recommendations to award the bid in the net amount of $869,385 to Road Drilling Company Incorporated of Tallahassee, Florida. There's a motion and a second. Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 9C3, bid number 2018-49.
Yes, sir.
Hang on there. Hang on. I hit the wrong key. It's the Division 3 for the Clearwell. Okay, Mr. McMurray. Thank you.
That's right. Division 3 Clearwell is a half a million gallon tank, and Constantine Engineering has again reviewed these bids. We've received two bids. Low bidder was Precon Corporation in Newberry, Florida, and the base bid amount was $725,000. City staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. McMurray. Does any member of council have any questions regarding this item? Hearing none. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we approve the department and engineer recommendations to award the bid in the amount of $725,000 to Precon Corporation of Newberry, Florida as described. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 9C4 is bid number 2018-50. Division 4 for off-site water line. Mr. McMurray.
Yes, thank you. Well, again, Constantine Engineering has reviewed these bids. We have received four bids. The low bidder was Locate Enterprises in East Coast, Fort Valley, Georgia. The bid, base bid amount was $218,674. City staff does recommend approval.
Thank you, sir. Does any member of council have any questions regarding this item? Hearing none. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we approve the department and engineer recommendations to award the bid in the amount of $218,674 to Locate Enterprises Incorporated of Fort Valley, Georgia as described. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 9C5 is bid number 2019-01 for pump station upgrades and improvements. Mr. McMurray.
Yes, mayor and council, thank you. This, this project, pump station upgrade and improvements includes rehabbing a sewer lift station in the 41 North and adding four generators to match the pump stations throughout the city. The Georgia Water Environmental Services has reviewed these bids. We have submitted to five, and the low bidder in this, this bidding was Piles Plumbing with $672,440. City staff has reviewed, does recommend approval.
Thank you, sir. Any member of council have any questions regarding this item? Hearing none. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we approve the department's recommendation to award the bid in the amount of $672,440 to Piles Plumbing and Utility Contractor Incorporated of Macon, Georgia. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McMurray. Item 9B is special event applications. Council here forbearance, I'd like to deviate from the agenda. We have one that has been added. There is the Farm Day Parade that will happen Saturday, the 6th of October for the Georgia National Fair, and the request is for us to approve the closing of Washington Street in preparation for the parade. Anything to add to that, Chief Lynn?
No, sir. I think that's my question.
Thank you, council. You've heard the request. This time, I will entertain a motion that we approve the closing of Washington Street in preparation for the parade as described. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 9D1, the Period Chamber of Commerce Downtown Merchants Council is partnering with the Main Street Promotion Committee to host the sixth annual sweets and treats on downtown streets on October the 31st, 2018 from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. Chief Lynn.
Yes, sir. It was fun, family event. Like I said, it's sixth year for it. It's a license event that we are happy to manage security at. The matter before council is the closure of the downtown footprint, if you will, so that we can hold this event safely without any interference from the traffic.
Any issues with this application? Thank you, sir. Any member of council have any questions of Chief Lynn regarding this item? Hearing none. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we approve the special event application from the Period Chamber Downtown Merchants Council and the Main Street Promotion Committee as described. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Item 9D2, the city of Perry is hosting Oktoberfest in downtown Perry on October 20th, 2018 from 3:00 p.m. until 9:00 p.m. There are awesome street closures regarding this as well. Chief Lynn?
Yes, sir. First time city event. The same footprint downtown, the council's authorization to close to give us this space to conduct this event safely. And also, as a separate matter, it's a special event alcohol permit that needs approval. Just have the Peacock Brewery and the vendors. The application's all in order. We have no issues with this event.
Thank you, chief. Does any member of council have any questions regarding this item? Hearing none. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we approve the special event application for the street closures and the alcohol permit license application as described. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 9D3, the city of Perry is hosting a free University of Georgia versus Florida tailgate and game broadcast event at Heritage Park on October the 27th, 2018 from 1:00 p.m. until 7:00 p.m. Chief Lynn?
Yes, sir. The item before council on this is approval of special event alcohol permit. Now, there are no street closures since it's held totally inside the new park. Just have the Peacock Brewery and the vendors again for this event, plus I believe it's also BYOB as well. This part I have no issues with the permit. Looks good to me.
Thank you, chief. Does any member of council have any questions regarding this item?
Mayor, we are prohibiting any cheering for Florida at this event, right?
You're out of order. All who I do agree with. Any other questions? Hearing none. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we approve the special event alcohol permit license application for the tailgate party as described. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 9D4 is the request from the Period Ministerial Association for its annual Christmas at the Square on December the 2nd, 2018 from 6:00 until 7:00 p.m. Chief Lynn?
Yes, sir. Mayor, a time honored event in Perry that requests a little bit different street closures care between Journeyville and Washington and ball between Conners and Main, so not the whole downtown footprint, but that's the matter before council is to put those street closures for this event.
Thank you, chief. Does any member of council have any questions regarding this item? Hearing none. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we approve the request from the Period Ministerial Association for the annual Christmas on the Square on December 2nd as described. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Mr. Gilmore, is there anything on the new business that we need to address at this time?
No, sir.
Thank you. Item 10 of council member items. Ms. Biden, Grace.
I would just like to thank the citizens of Perry and surrounding areas for helping us to have such a successful music festival. I would also like to thank the staff as well as our music investor, Carl, for what they did.
I agree. Nicely said. Anything further? Thank you. Mr. Jones?
I'll follow up with that by thanking staff and the public for helping us to have a great food truck Friday, Friday night. That's all I have.
Agreed. Thank you, sir. Mr. Walker?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes, sir.
Mr. King?
Thank you.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Just may I do one item? Kind of continuing along the vein of events, I will remind everybody that Saturday, beginning of sundown, we'll be showing Lion King at Creekwood Park next to Splash Pad there. Bring a picnic, bring your blankets, whatever should be a good event. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And Splash Pad will be operational.
Splash Pad will be operational, but this time we got rigged where we can turn, they got overhead lights on, so you can see the Splash Pad lights, it's our colors. Should be quite nice.
That works. Thank you, sir. Mr. Waters, do anything for us.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 11 of department head and staff items. We'll start with the department of finance and administration. Ms. King?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. From the department of community, what is your?
Development.
A development. I wanted to say affairs, and I knew that wasn't right. How long have I been doing this? Mr. Wood?
Thank you.
Anything from the department of development?
Nothing further, sir.
Thank you. From the police department, Chief Lynn?
Nothing further.
Thank you. Fire emergency services, Chief Parker?
Yes, sir. Mayor, mayor council, I'd like to let yourselves and the citizens all know that this coming Saturday, September 22nd, we'll be conducting a smoke detector blitz in the Perry community in conjunction with the Red Cross, and we're looking for any volunteers that would like to come out. We'll be starting that at 8:00 Saturday morning. There'll be some training. They'll team you up with some folks, and then we'll go out and install smoke detectors in people's homes that need those. So, any volunteers, please be at fire headquarters right behind us here, 8:00 Saturday morning. That's all I have.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. McMurray, do you have anything further for us?
Nothing further, ma'am. Thank you.
Item 12, general public items. Does any member of the general public wish to address counsel on any item at this time? Thank you. Item 13, a mayor items. I have a couple. The walk with mayor and council will be held on September the 25th, 2018 at 5:30. It will be in District 2 in Wind River subdivision. I would encourage you to come out and bid the ear myself and the members of council The next regularly scheduled meeting for this body will be on Monday, October the 1st, for a work session that begins at 5:00 in this room. And the next regularly scheduled council and pre-council meeting will be Tuesday, October the 2nd. The pre-council is at 5:00, council is at 6:00. I will remind everyone that all of our meetings are open to the public. A reminder that Georgia National Fair is starting in a couple of weeks. Thursday, October the 4th, we will have 500 and some odd thousand of our closest friends and neighbors show up for this event. Please go out and have a lot of fun, but be careful. We will have guests, and that's always, that's always a good time. We're looking forward to that. My understanding is that they have a new birthing center for animals that is opening at the same time, and that's going to be cool. There will be a lot of eyes and ears open watching that. Our Department of Leisure Services is going to have a ceremony to kick off to our football season that's starting, I believe it's this Saturday, September the 22nd, at Creekwood Park Football Field. The ceremony begins at 9:00 a.m., and then there will be some energetic football to follow. If you've never been out to see those guys participate, it's an awful lot of fun. I would encourage you to support our youth in all of their endeavors, specifically in the football and in the basketball season will be starting shortly thereafter. That is all I have at this time. Representative Blackman, again, congratulations and thank you for what you do for us. We're glad to have you here tonight. You're welcome anytime. We appreciate that. There's nothing else to come before us. Oh, youth leadership. Thank y'all. And is everybody still awake? Okay. That's the first test that you passed. Congratulations. Scott, make sure you note it in the files. Glad to have y'all. You're welcome anytime. If there's nothing else to come before us, thank you for your interest and participation. We stand adjourned.